Mayor, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for October 7, 2021, to order at 7:03 PM. On roll call, council members Ballaschary.
Here.
Fakori.
Here.
Fasolo.
Here.
Golubek.
Here.
Pellegrine.
Here.
Council President Wetchler.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our special meeting. And if you're confused, the difference between a regular meeting and a special meeting, it's exactly what it means, "special." No more than that, it's just an additional meeting. At the end of this meeting, though, we are going to go into a short recess for our executive meeting. So we'll ask you to leave the premises, not... Let me take that back. Leave this room, not the premises, and join us when we call you back in. So let's get started. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require, at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now, therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing a special notice in the record in Herald News and by posting such notice in the office of the Borough Clerk, as well as a public place within the municipal building, and also by notifying interested citizens. Said notice was posted and transmitted on October 3, 2021, and published on October 6, 2021. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. For resolutions this evening, we have R-372-21, award proposal for design services, Alamo Group 2021 Elmwood Park Borough Road Program; R-373-21, authorizing the hiring of entry-level police officers pursuant to NJSA 11A:4-1.3; and R-374-21, approve the consent agenda.
Mike, could you break down R-373-21?
Yes, Mayor. The state has adopted a new bill that allows police departments to hire transfer officers without having to get permission from the sending agency. In the past, you used to have to get approval from the agency they work at. Now that's no longer an issue. They can simply resign and we can hire them here, provided that they check all the other boxes. So this resolution is required if we plan on hiring under that program.
Okay, so basically, it's eliminating a whole step in the process.
That's correct.
Excellent. Okay. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
First, by Wetchler. Second, by Pellegrine. On roll call, council members Ballaschary.
Yes.
Fakori.
Yes.
Fasolo.
Yes.
Golubek.
Yes.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Council President Wetchler.
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes my portion of the special meeting, Mayor.
Thank you, Erin. May I have a motion to open it to the floor?
Second.
Anyone from the public here to speak on any subject at this point? If not, I close the public portion. May I have a motion to go into executive? All in favor? If you'll leave us for a little while, we'll call you back.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the governing body wishes to discuss litigation, legal reports, minutes will be kept, and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires that confidentiality, then the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Okay, I guess we're back on. Motion to open to the public? All in favor? Anyone from the public here to speak?
No, no, no. Motion to adjourn. We did that.
Forget that, you can't speak. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Excluded that meeting.
Okay. Mike, can you hit stop? 7/20/21, to order at 7:45 PM. On roll call, council members Ballaschary.
Here.
Fakori.
Here.
Fasolo.
Here.
Golubek. Pellegrine.
Here.
Council President Wetchler.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require, at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual notice in the record in Herald News of Woodland Park and by posting such notice in the office of the Borough Clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building, and also by notifying interested citizens. Notice was posted on January 8, 2021, and published on January 13, 2021. Would anyone from the public like to be heard? To speak on any item? Please come forth. State your name, address. You've got to get close to it, Ray.
My name is Jay Lofte, and I live on 102th Street. I'm here with Chief of Staff, Robert Montori, and we have a public cannabis, Lardens, and a welcome letter. It doesn't care with you guys.
Any problems? Would you like to come up here and sit down, Ray?
I'm okay, guys.
We've got a nurse up here, so...
I've got about 15 there for us, hold on.
She's ready to bring you dinner, also. You know, that hospital food is so-so, Ray.
So the reason to speak, and I'm going to let Robert take over, is for the welcome letter. Obviously, we are in different times, and things are changing. And obviously, being a part of Elmwood Park now for the past six years, we just want to be able to, you know, to grow the Elmwood Park as we speak. Being a member of the community, donating my time as a coach, as a father, and knowing most of the kids, and leaders like Mike and you guys, you know, obviously helps out a lot to be part of the community. So Robert, I'm going to let you take over, so you can explain what we actually need. If I can sit down a little bit.
Welcome, Robert.
Thank you for allowing me to talk, Mr. Mayor. This is a conference of the council, I greatly appreciate your time. Central Cannabis Corporation is running into a difficult situation at this point. And I understand that you have a cannabis committee that you've elected, and they're going to be meeting once a month. The problem is that the cannabis application for the state was delayed, and it should be coming out sometime this month. As a result of that, we do need an endorsement from the township or a welcome letter indicating that you'll welcome a cannabis company into cultivation in your facility as part of the application process. And what we've done, just as, and just so you know a little bit about Central Cannabis Corporation, we are a minority-based business. We are Elmwood Park-centric. We have made it a point to hire disabled American veterans, and veterans first, and members of the community. We intend to give back to this community. So part of the cannabis... Part of the fact that we have cannabis being approved here is, do you want a small mom-and-pop Elmwood Park-centric company to come in here? Or do you want a big brand to come in here that's already been licensed and take over?
Before we answer that question, which are you, mom-and-pop or the big corporation?
The mom-and-pop.
Okay.
That's where I stand, Mayor. I think that, you know, they said, and even the state said, that they're looking for minority-owned businesses. And we comply with that. We comply that we hire a disabled American veteran, Lieutenant Colonel, who not only is a... has a farming license, but he has logistics and supply chain management all behind him. So we, in addition to that, we have right now on the table almost a half a million dollars committed to legal and to cannabis experts who have written cannabis applications in Oregon, California, and Colorado. So we are serious about coming in here and being a leader in the cannabis community. As a matter of fact, today we had a meeting with Dr. Steve Fisher from Bergen Community College, and we just signed a letter right here from the college, which I don't mind sharing with you. Jay, do I have your permission to choose?
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Hmm?
And this is a letter here from Bergen Community College, where they're going to institute 18 credits for students. And we've also had a very lengthy conversation, where we're hoping to continue this, not only to 18 credits, but to have a two-year associate degree in cannabis. The Central Cannabis Corporation intends to work right along with Bergen Community College to actually have a hands-on training facility for these students. I don't know too many other places, or even the larger corporations that are out there right now committing to our students in this new field of cultivation. And I think that's quite unique. It's unique not only for Central Cannabis Corporation, but it puts Elmwood Park on the map. It changes the dynamics, the way we're looking at cannabis today. And I'm asking just for support from the town. I'm asking for the town to help us, because without that letter of support, and with the committee's meeting only once a month, we're going to be behind the ankle on the application, and we may be knocked out, facing a serious amount of money. The other issue that we're facing, and that's been very difficult for us, is that the regulations require that cannabis cultivators are in a certain geographic area of the township, which means it's like finding a needle in a haystack as far as for property. What we've been finding is price gouging. We have, in some instances, when the minute that we mention that we're a cannabis corporation, the price increases by 50% for the asking price, well over what the valuation is of the property. So we're at many different obstacles right now. We have committed from an investor almost $28 million coming into this community to revitalize, to regentrifications of certain areas. There's areas in this town that are just sitting there that's not even ratable. But if we have your support, it will be a rateable, because we intend to acquire those properties and build further and expand. That's our intent and our commitment to this township. And we're just asking for a support letter. The support letter is no guarantee, and I say that to you, Mayor, and distinct members of the council, there's no guarantee in us, and I'm saying that clearly, that we are going to be issued a license. There are only 28 licenses being issued, and at this point, it's the big players are in, and they're getting their licenses. And as a small player, we're just asking for that opportunity.
Want to read it?
Would you like to see?
Yeah, to this side, please. He doesn't like the councilmen on this side. Okay, let me say this, and I think we understand where you're coming from. Please understand where we're coming from. This is all new. Before I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, Sal, we're going to have two licenses for cultivation. I would think there's a vetting process to those applications. Let's say we get three, four applications, there would be a vetting process to that. So what it seems like, and I think the rest of the council's feeling this way, we're being pressured to move quick on something, and I know, I understand your problems, and I don't want to add to your problems, but once again, it's new to us, and we're figuring it out as we go along, also. Sal, what could we could do here?
Mayor, because of the nuance of this whole legislation to give to the state, and right now even the state is in a state of flux, because they're trying to work through this whole thing themselves. However, I would welcome a sample letter if you may have what you're looking for, and I would be happy to. Now, I've heard that other towns have issued these types of letters, welcome letters, but I have not had a chance to review one of them. And my concern is, I would have probably no problem recommending the council to issue that type of letter, except for a full, clear understanding that that letter is to be utilized solely for a show that the intent of this council is to welcome, but not to guarantee. And there should not be construed in any way that there is... that is significant of guaranteeing a license or certifying the property. So I, like I said, if you have a sample form, a letter that you have utilized, or another state, or you can show me something that... Look, it's evident right now, Mayor, that this is a whole new world, okay? And this whole legislation is new to everyone, including the state. Even though the state of New Jersey has already licensed, I believe, five, twelve, excuse me, twelve, initially, they had licensed five exclusively. Then because of the lawsuit, they extended the licensing process. But they still look capping, and I don't know where they're capping it to, or who they're capping it with. And unfortunately, big players have been involved, small players have not had an opportunity. This is their opportunity.
So Sal, let me ask you this. What I think I'm hearing from you is that we can offer them a letter of recommendation...
No, no, well, not recommendation. It's saying, we as the council, Mayor and Council, have been beaten to this type of form. We as Mayor and Council of Elmwood Park have cast a ordinance which allows cannabis sale, growth, and cultivation. We have had a request by a particular company for the council to say, yes, we would welcome something like this. And underneath it, it would have to say, but our... This does not guarantee, and it's not... I mean, there's going to be a tremendous amount of litigation, because they cannot and should not be able to utilize that letter for the purpose of saying, hey, we already have approval by Elmwood Park to conduct the business. If they use that to buy a piece of property, that's their risk. It'll be their risk. Not... It should not be imputed on the council, okay? They should not and will not be able to utilize that letter to say, okay, now, we're going to buy this particular property owner, lease this particular property already, without even getting a license or even an application, unless they make a contractual agreement with that property owner, subject to a licensing process.
Okay. So let's see, does that help you?
Yes. Mr. Mgrafi, you were actually going on, and there is no guarantee. There's no guarantee that we're going to get approved by the state. There's a $500,000, you know, investment that we're doing, going into this application with no guarantees. Like Mr. Mgrafi has said, when I go in and I go to try to acquire one of these properties that are actually price gouging us right now, I wish we would just change our ABC widgets, and then maybe we'd get a lower price. But the fact of the matter is, is that all we're asking for is a welcoming letter, that you understand who we are as a company, and that we are Elmwood Park-centric. We want to put Elmwood Park on the map as a premier cannabis cultivation facility. That's our goal.
We get it, Rob. You're okay with that?
If you can...
I'm okay with that, because that's...
I would be more than happy to review it and then recommend to the Mayor and Council at the next meeting of the act. Go down to Solis.
Okay. So let's... Hold on a second. Council, are we in agreement to give... Sal, to go ahead on this letter?
Definitely.
Yes? No nays here? Mr. Attorney?
Your step is good. Okay. I will get you documentation if you need, and then...
Anything else, you can provide.
Right?
Whatever you need, Mr. Mgrafi, I'll ensure it.
Governor makes it a little easier for everybody else.
Yes. So you said the next meeting, when is it? So this is the only thing, we have President... Governor Murphy went public, saying they will be out before November, and they have a meeting on the 13th. So I'm not sure when the next meeting is.
14th and the 21st. 21st is the public meeting, where everything will be voted on then. So make sure you get anything you want to get.
We'll have it tonight or tomorrow. The letter will be an informal letter.
Yes.
Approved by the Mayor and Council on a verbal vote.
Mike, you have any...
I greatly appreciate your support.
Any thing to say about this whole scenario?
No, I understand their dilemma, and I think that as long as the borough is protected, we should give them the letter so they have an opportunity to at least make application to the state. They can't make application without that letter.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Just so that the Mayor and Council know, the way it's set up right now, it's like a catch-22. The state won't do anything unless they have something here. We technically are not really authorized to do anything until the state does. So it's...
Sounds like government to me.
This particular letter is like a, from what I'm reviewing of that, is an interim between the catch-22, trying to resolve who can come first to take over here.
I just want to go on record and apologize to say, it's a lot of pressure on everyone, especially the council and the borough, and so for us as well.
This is a hot potato item.
It is.
For everybody.
If I sound pushy or something, we're not, we're just... We're trying to make it work for everyone, at the same time I'm trying to...
Why do you have two six guns on your hips there if you're not pressuring us? We get it. We'll cut it short, so you can get off your feet, because the nurse is watching you on your feet, and she's going to naughty, naughty.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Mr. Mgrafi, thank you. I greatly appreciate it.
Anybody else from the audience care to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion. Erin?
Yes, Mayor. First on the agenda, we have fire company number one here with us this evening. So with that being said, Fire Chief Bruce, please feel free to join us on the dais.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Thank you for having us here tonight. As we all know, we were here just about a year ago now, exploring our opportunities to order a new truck. And with your permission, we started the process of investigating, building, specing out a new piece of apparatus. It's taken us just about a year, but we finally have it done. Just to give you some background, as we mentioned in the last meeting, the NFPA standard for a new apparatus frontline piece is 15 years on a replacement. We've tried to stretch it out as much as we can. Our current rig is 19 years old, it's going to be 20 in January. The build time on an apparatus from the day it is ordered is just about a year and a half to two years. So by the time the rig is passed, ordered, it will be just about 22 years old.
22?
22. As we all know, engine one is a frontline piece for the town, because we're centrally located, you know, we're running six, seven times a day. And with that said, it's time for... It's time for a new one. We did speak with Councilman Golubek, and we gave some pricing. The pricing that we have from Seagrave is for... There's no fluff in the number. We didn't go crazy with bells, whistles, power this, power that, things that are just going to break and cost us money later on. This is... The price you're going to see is for no tools and equipment. We're going to utilize all the tools and equipment we currently have, because we're pretty sound there. So this is the truck only, and it was built to service the town for the needs of the town and what we need.
What's the price tag on it?
It was $929,914, I believe.
Mayor, can I offer my two cents?
Yes, please.
So obviously, as the fire commissioner from the council, I'm in regular touch with the chief, go to their monthly chief's meetings. So a few weeks ago, he had reached out and said they were close to putting everything together as to, you know, what their investigation came to. You know, so I asked to meet with them beforehand, so I kind of, you know, can see and ask all the questions. So we met this Monday, Chief Bruce, former Chief Ron Pressler, former Chief Mike Pressler, and Captain Lewinsky. I met at Company One, looked at the existing piece of equipment, and had them walk me through, you know, kind of like A to Z, what the current one has, what they're proposing with the new one. You know, they were very thorough. I believe they did their due diligence in coming up with both the best number and the most efficient kind of engine. They can get into that themselves. One of the biggest takeaways, just a fact that was dropped, you know, in the conversation, was that Saddlebrook recently replaced their engine, and their number got to about $1.2 million. Same goal, replace an old engine, they got to $1.2 million. Our, you know, our fire officials came in at 9:30, and everything that they want to do, to me, made sense. So I fully support what they're putting in front of us. You know, we're doing a lot of ambitious things in the borough, and the flip side of that is investing in our emergency services, which we've done in police, and I think it's appropriate to do the same for fire, so.
Thank you for that report. Anyone else from the council care to speak on this?
Yes.
Please.
I think what our fire department does for our town, they deserve everything that they need, because it's the safety of them first and our residents. So whatever they need, and what they're saying, that they're taking things off the old one to put onto the new fire truck that's saving us, I think they're entitled to everything they want.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Fasolo, you care to... Any questions, or Sandy?
I agree. Thank you for the report, too, Dan, that you sat together and you really looked over everything, and obviously, you guys, you know better than we would now. And no, I'm in support of it, you know, you need to upgrade.
Okay. Shaqib?
I'm a supporter of the chief, so, yeah, yes for me.
I love it. Man of few words, but potent words. Yes, please.
I also agree. Every time you come before us, you're well-prepared, you do your homework, you do the investigating. I never doubt that you, you know, research properly. So yes, it's for the safety of our community. We respect all of you, so yes, it's a yes.
Thank you very much.
Chief, you have any... Anything you want to add?
Mayor, the fire department is well-represented here tonight. The gentlemen that are seated in the audience, as well as Chief Bruce, very, you know, good members of the department, who have the town's best interest at heart in... I say that in safety and in finances. Chief Bruce has been a blessing to work with, and the gentlemen here are all very, you know, solid members of the department, and I trust in what they say.
Okay. Well, you know, there's always, when you hear 972,000?
No, 930.
930. Is that sticker...
It's down a little bit, a little bit.
It came down. It's that sticker shot.
Yes, they do.
Right? A large number like that. But the way I look at it, and I've been here for many a years, and went through maybe four or five trucks along with Mr. Pressley there, Senior. Is Mike here? Yeah, there's Mike, too. I look at it this way, if we had to pay for a full-time fire department, we're talking millions per year, maybe $3 million. I think I ran the numbers once. And when we think about the effort that you've put in, not going with the 15 years, going more with 20, we're stretching it a little longer than we should, but that's a smart thing for the town and the taxpayers. I don't have no questions whatsoever about the whole deal. I think you've probably vetted it well. Our liaison was there, and he comes up with an excellent report, and I have no problems with it also. So let me ask you, Rob, how many more years you got as chief?
Here in four months.
I just want you to know, you've aged a little.
I'm not counting.
Before you were chief, you aged a little, I want you to know that. You're better-looking now.
Oh, thank you. My wife would disagree.
All right, I think we're done. Thank you very much, and thank your fellow firemen for coming in and supporting.
I will. Thank you for your support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Mayor, next we have Chris Colley from Topology to make a presentation on the Broadway redevelopment plan.
Is that Chris Colley we're talking about? Bye-bye, guys. Christopher! Getting to see a lot of you lately.
Okay, so while Chris is getting set up...
Yeah, yeah.
Mayor, do you want me to go over the correspondence while Chris is getting set up?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so while Chris is getting set up, item number three, correspondence. You will see a letter from the County of Bergen, awarding the borough for their fiscal year '21-'22 CDBG grant application for... '21-'22, CDBG grant application for 13th and 14th Street road improvements in the amount of $130,000.
And that's to...
I, it's, it's road resurfacing, so, you know, I forward this to the engineer, they would have to put together a proposal, and Roy would have to put together a bond ordinance.
Is that for '21 or '22? The year?
It's, so they're fiscal, they're on a fiscal year, so this is fiscal year '21-'22.
Okay.
So I'll send it over to the engineer and Roy, so that he knows that a bond will have to come in the future, and the engineer could work on a proposal for design services.
While we're on roads, there was some concern about me, from me, about exceeding the million-dollar ceiling that we've had over the past couple of years, and we were at $1,004,000, but we did find out that, that, what was the grant called?
The American Recovery.
The American Recovery Act, that we can use that for infrastructure, which I had figured was correct, that our drainage program was infrastructure. Roy, Roy found out that was so, so now we're gonna, any thoughts I had of not agreeing with that number is, are gone now, we're still at $1 million, that 375 is going to come off with a $1,004,000, and I'm, I'm happy with that, just, just, she was not...
Wow, that's great.
Mayor, I'm very happy to hear your change of heart, Mayor.
Okay.
Who decided that, 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 that the, the federal grant's going to be used for that?
He did. He did.
Why, do you, you have a problem with that?
No, these are things that are a mayor and council conversation.
Well, let's, here, here it is, right now.
No, no, I, I, we'll get into it, I just want to make that point, that when we get a $1,004,000 from the federal government, that is a full governing body conversation. I'm not even saying I'm opposed to this idea, I'm just making that point, that's all I...
Well, to, to your point, do you want, do you want to discuss it?
I think in general, it'd be a good idea for the council, mayor and council, to have a discussion, how we spend all that federal money, as a group.
Okay, lead the charge.
I'm not, I'm not prepared to do that tonight, that's not on the agenda, I'm just saying in general.
Okay, well, being that you're saying that, then my position of possibly vetoing it is still in place.
I am not disagreeing with the idea, I'm just making the point that the council's the council, and is a very relevant part of deciding where that money goes.
Daniel, what is this? What kind of meeting is this?
I forget it.
This is a work meeting. We're discussing it now.
The only point I'm making, Mayor, is that you announced today that we're using 400 grand from the federal money towards this. I'm not saying I disagree with that, I'm saying that you're announcing that, and this is a mayor and council collaborative decision on how we spend the federal money.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
So...
And that's, and that's true.
I get it, why, why am I mentioning it?
Talk to him in a microphone. You said that you're not going to veto the...
I'm letting you know my position on it, and you could do what you want.
Right, but you didn't, you know, we didn't say, you know, the $430,000 or whatever we're getting, that we knew anything about it, and all of a sudden, you're changing your, you know...
When I said what I said, there were smiles on everybody's face. Now we're taking the joy of that away.
No, we're not, no we're not.
Okay, so what do you want to do?
All we're saying is, we're a council, and we all deserve to have the right to discuss this, before you say anything that you're, oh, we're going to take this money...
I'm giving you my opinion, I don't even have a vote here.
But we didn't even know about it first.
It sounded like it was the decision, and he's, and he's got a valid point, he's saying we should all discuss it, and then we come up with the decision.
Okay, what's the...
I'm having an argument now.
He's got a valid point, what's, what's the result?
Any of these things, any of these things should come before the council, because we're, if we're...
Here it is, this is our work meeting.
But this is your, this is your decision, without even...
That's my opinion at a work meeting. When do you, if you don't discuss this at a work meeting, when do you discuss it?
However, however much money we have from the federal government, when we're ready to discuss it, we list the agenda item, federal money, hey, guys, how are we spending it, you're in the criteria, that's my only opinion here. It should be here at the table, not announced, not announced to us that, hey, you know, we're going to spend 400 of that federal money towards this, and I won't veto.
Daniel, Daniel, how am I supposed to convey my feelings, other than a work meeting? Do you want me to call you as all personally?
I understand, I understand everything you're saying, but you're, you're telling us, you aren't asking us, you aren't discussing...
I'm telling you my feelings on where I was going to go, if that money was not allocated towards that $1.4 million. So we're, here's the place to tell yous. Just because there's an ordinance here, and a microphones, this, this is our work meeting, that we're supposed to discuss this at work meetings, and that's what I'm doing.
But Mayor, it's not on the agenda, saying we're going to get this much money, and then you, we all discuss it, and then you say, okay, in my opinion, this is why I'm going to not veto.
You want it on the agenda, we'll get it on the agenda, that's what, that's what we're here to talk about.
That's what it should have been, because I need grant money that should come before the council.
Okay.
Mayor, Roy will be here next week for the work session, so perhaps you guys could discuss how to spend the money then, when he's here.
Okay.
Okay, 3B is just a heads up, the next grant cycle for CDBG is now open, and it will be open through December 20th, so just food for thought, begin to think of what you would like to apply for, so that our grant writer could submit the application by December 20th.
Okay, what's the council's pleasure?
We don't have to decide tonight, it was just kind of an FYI, think about it, perhaps you could discuss it with the engineer next week, we have until December.
Okay.
With that being said, we'll go back to Chris.
That was a hell of an admission, Chris.
He gave me just enough time.
See that? Good night.
Good night.
Thank you again.
Good night.
See? I see you. You can sit?
Yeah.
Okay. So, let's see, it is 8:17. Thanks for having me this evening, Chris Colley, Topology, request for the borough. I have a presentation this evening, depending on how the council feels, I can either do like an eight-minute version, or like 15-minute version.
Eight minutes.
Eight, okay, all right, sounds good. I'll start my timer. Yeah, okay. So thanks for having me, I'm here this evening to talk to you about Broadway. This will be the second redevelopment plan that we're working on together, that we've worked on together. I provided a draft that we've been working on for the last several months, based on a lot of the ideas that we put in the master plan, and we talked about in our, whatever, 18 months or so, two years or so, working together. So my objective today is to give you just a little bit of background, I don't intend to do too much background, I won't do that for you tonight, an overview of like what we're thinking for redevelopment plan and for zoning, and then, and then talk about some next steps. So, like, we've been through this once before, but just for like catch-up, like when I say redevelopment plan, I mean zoning, like what you can or can't build in an area, public improvements that you might want to have in that area, design standards you might want to have for that area, and then something that we talked about a lot when we did Market Street, was this idea of an overlay zone versus a superseding zone, an important distinction. An overlay zone basically means you just add new zoning and everything else, part of there stays the same. So we're going to be closing an overlay for this, for this plan, and I'll, I'll tell you what you guys are going to do.
It'll be an overlay zone, Chris?
Yeah, that's generally like a lighter touch, and has less sign-on consequences. Just like two philosophical, philosophical is generous, planning related comments, like one, like, you know, these things are always long-term processes, as, as you're, you know, increasingly aware, so like when you look at a zoning map, and you see, oh, you know, Chris has that as whatever, four stories, five stories, but that's where the, whatever the ALB is, like, that's not going to go anywhere, like, these are long-term documents, right, so we're always thinking in the future. And then two, like, you know, bad zoning, zoning's not like cool to talk about, or fun for a lot of people, but like, it is important, it affects what happens, and especially what doesn't happen. So since I'm doing the eight-minute version, I'm not going to give you all the background, except to say that we all have been talking about Broadway for a while. We talked about when we did the master plan process, and like, the redevelopment plan is like an important step, and it's a good conversation. So since we've been talking about this for such a long time, I did just sort of pull this table that we did about a year and a half ago, about like the strengths and weaknesses of Broadway. I won't go through each of these individually, but like, just one big green that like is really underappreciated, but is very obvious, right, is, is the train station, that's right there, even if it's not within your borders. I was frankly a little surprised by how effective that station is, like, to get you to places where you'd want to go. I've only taken the train here one time, right? But, you know, it's like 49 minutes to Penn, and then it's like an hour to, to Lower Manhattan, and like, that's, people should want to build around that, that should be a draw, and, and I think that the zoning that we're talking about, the help of that. And then like on the flip side, one weakness, we'll talk about, like, I make a lot of presentations, and we always talk about pedestrian safety, positive pedestrian environments, blah, 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 a lot of times it's like a luxury, right, it's like something you want to have. This is like one of the rare cases, and perhaps the only case, that I've been a part of, where like pedestrian safety is actually like a safety issue, right, where like, it's like no joke, like people have died, this is like, you know, this is serious business for pedestrians there. So, again, short version, so I won't walk through the current zoning too much, except to say that it's, it's kind of weird, right, and like, you know, towns have old zoning, zoning evolves in a lot of different ways, but like the existing zoning, that section of Broadway has three different districts on there, you're not going to see this, but, but I'll tell you, the reason why I pulled it out, this is the existing zoning table, is like, it's pretty restricted, in terms of uses, and in terms of what you can build, you can only build up to two stories on most of Broadway, which I don't think really jives with a lot of the sort of things I've heard from you over time, about it being like a key corridor for us, and all of those things. And it's very restrictive in terms of coverages, setbacks and things of that nature. Uses, and then I'll jump into the plan, and uses are also pretty weird, right? I know Broadway is not traditionally a residential corridor, but the only type of residential you can build on sections of Broadway are single-family halls, which is just odd, right, like, it'd be the last type of residential I think you'd expect to see there. Then there are also some like weird little quirks about types of retail, types of commercial, and again, like, these are all things that, when like developers, or whoever in the development community looks at zoning, and they see, they're like, well, I don't really want to be bothered necessarily with that, because it's, it's, it's challenging operating. So, let me add, four and a half minutes. Let's talk a little bit about like what we're thinking for the draft, the draft plan that we put together. These are the boundaries, right, so we're going, I mean, this is Broadway, the extent of Broadway from, from the Patterson border to the Fairlon border. I'll tell you a little bit about some of the proposed, oh, well, just sort of methodology, like, I'm increasingly a believer that you need to have the important standards that you really care about in zoning, but like bells and whistles, and like extra restrictions are not typically helpful for helping communities advance their goals. So, we, we employ what we're calling like pink zoning, meaning like the opposite of red tape, less red tape, in this, in this plan, focusing on like what things look like when they're built, and, you know, the objectives, which you can see in the document, like, you know, they sort of have come from you all over the years, we want to encourage activity, we want to encourage investment, we want to elevate commercial, we want to make it safer, we want to make it more attractive. So some of the uses that are in there, it's like a wide range of uses that are permitted, a whole bunch of different commercial uses, breweries, distilleries, theater, hotel, mixed use, performing arts, and down there at the bottom, residential uses, a range of them, both in mixed use or in standalone multifamily buildings, like, that's frankly, like what the market wants to build, right, and that's what the market wants to build around train stations, and like, that's, that's, that's the way to, to encourage investment and to encourage activity on this corridor. On that is a departure from the existing zone for the board, and I assume to the extent that you want to talk about uses, I don't think anybody has issues with commercial uses, but you know, residential's always, always a discussion point. We did bump up the heights, the proposed heights, from four to six stories, up to six stories along this corridor, for, for mixed-use buildings, that's taller, right? We didn't just like pull that out of the hat, the, the reason, or the way we got to six stories, like, I just looked at your zoning, and I said, what is the biggest building that I can currently build in Eldwood Park anywhere? And in your office zone, POP zone, you can go to like 75 feet, and then, interestingly, like in your industrial zones, you can go to a 55-foot building, which is like a four and a half or five-story building, and those are scattered, those are scattered all over, so, you know, taller buildings, right, but I, I think that with the size of the corridor, the width of the corridor, type of infrastructure on the corridor, like, I think it's, I think it's suitable along that. So, I'm going to hit my eight-minute mark in a moment, but, we did, and I sort of glossed over this in the beginning, like, you know, there are like different grades to state highways, so to get here from Newark today, I drove 21, right, 21st State Highway, and then I got on Route 4, Route 4 also is a state highway. And as I was driving up 21, I was like, man, I'm going to go present this redevelopment plan to this council that talks about it, streetscape improvements, and like sidewalks, and like making safe for pedestrians, and I was driving up 21, this is crazy, right, like, but, you know, there are different grades to these types of roads, so like, you do have the challenge of Route 4 being a state highway, that's always going to be a challenge, but like, when you're on the ground there, like, sort of the bones of like a walkable place are there, like, there are sidewalks on, on both sides on like 21, I wish there were more crosswalks, but there are some crosswalks. So, we include a lot of language about streetscape improvement, street treaties, whatnot, that's always going to be a work in progress with DOT. I personally believe that even if you don't have control over a street, like, if you're going to write a document for it, you can say this is what they like it to look like, so you can go to DOT and tell them that, and, and we, we employ a lot of, or we propose to employ a lot of stuff like that. So finally, on parking, and then I'll wrap for now. You know, we wrote something into the REEXAM, which I also believe very strongly about, and, you know, the REEXAM is not adopted, you know, like, people are so afraid of parking, towns are so afraid of there not being enough parking, that they just make parking standards incredibly high, right, because they always want to account for, well, what about the visitors, or what about if there's three people living in that one bedroom, they're going to need three spots, and like, it just gets nuts, and there's just so much parking that's required, kills, kills projects, kills, kills progress, frankly. So, we, we employed this approach, you know, that, really, I think that parking should be dependent on like what the person who's building it, and the people who live there are going to need. So, like, we've reduced parking standards here, one per unit for rezzy, residential, fairly standard for the other uses, but, you know, took a big swing at parking.
Chris, before we move on?
Yeah, please.
Going back to the, the height, five and a half stories, you know, we got right in back of that zone, we got residential.
Yeah, it's a great point, great point. So what we put for that is like, and I have, I think I have an image of it in a moment, there's like a concept of step back, right, so like a building is coming up from a street, yeah, and let's say it's three stories up of the street, and then it has to step back away from the street. And what we put in there is that anything that's within, I think, 20 feet, although saying that out loud, that might be a little light of a residential zone, cannot be more than four stories.
So what attracted you to that height? Obviously, that, that would be a draw for developer, or...
I mean, it's, it's, so there's two things, two things on it. One, if you were to have someone who was going to do like a significant mixed-use project, they are going to need, notwithstanding what's on this slide, a significant amount of parking, right, and the way that parking is most effectively provided is through one level or two levels of structured parking on the ground floors. So, that maximum six sort of like thinks of that, and anticipates that. Another thing that may be not so afraid of height here on this corridor, and ultimately it'll be a decision, is, is the width of the street, right? So like, when we looked at Market Street, I think the tallest building that is in that redevelopment plan in Market Street is four stories. Market Street is a much tighter corridor, right? So like, the feeling of height is much different when I've got sort of, I think, 375 feet from building face to building face, versus Broadway, which I haven't measured, but I can tell you is twice as wide from building face to building face, so like, I don't have, the height doesn't feel as overwhelming when I'm on Broadway, as it would if I was on the...
There's already a four-story building there, we'll number one.
And that's another great point, Chief, thank you for reminding me. There's also that office building right at the edge of Market Street, right, right before you go towards the bridge, which is four stories.
And we used to have the Grand Indian Tower, which was, I don't even know how many stories.
Where's that, Mike?
One Broadway, corner of Sterling and Broadway, office, number one.
That's four stories?
Four, yeah.
Okay, now...
And there's, and Sterling Street is all houses.
Right.
Right there.
Yeah. Is that, but, I, I just thought... Is that, but I, I just thought, four stories, five, five and a half, for that resident living on the closest to this with a one-family house, a little shocking. Four stories, it probably, it's less shocking. Uh, but that's up to the council, what, what they think about that. I just think it's a little too much.
Okay, that's, that's fair feedback. And, and you know, frankly, um, just the way these parcels layout, like it's going to be very challenging. And, and I was trying not to overcomplicate these regulations, right? This much here, that much there. But like, it would be very challenging for someone to squeeze a six-story building into like one of these tiny properties. You know, that's, that's just, that's hard. But it's, it's fair point. What we could do is we could do something like, you know, if the council decides this is a point of objection, we could do like a lot area minimum for taller buildings or increase the setback from residential, um, something to, to make that not, not.
Can we do this so that there's, there is a precedent set already with this four-story building? Use that as, as the benchmark, not exceed that?
You could do it. You know, I was just thinking back to though, like that the fact that these industrial zones that you have all throughout town have a fifty-five-story building, or sorry.
Fifty-five story?
Fifty-five-foot building permitted in them, right? And, and like frankly, those are, those are all over. Um, fifty-five feet is basically a five-story building. You know, Broadway with the width and the visibility and like the highway there and the proximity to the train, if you're going to go for a taller building somewhere, like it seems like that, that would be the place to do it. So, I mean, you know, we can do whatever the council decides.
Yeah, I, I know you're stuck on it and I, I appreciate all the work you put into it. Uh, but how's the council feel?
I have a question, you know, because I can't see from here. The, um, the end of the map on the right side.
Yeah.
That includes the, the homes on that next street, thirteen?
Yes, that's another point that I wanted to discuss today, um, so thank you for bringing it up. When we did Market Street, um, when we passed that plan, we adopted that plan, what we did was we included some of those properties that didn't front on Market Street that were behind it. And, um, I should say for a point of clarity, any participation in a redevelopment plan by anybody is always optional, right? It's your right to sell your house, there's no condemnation in any circumstance whatsoever, right? So, given that those properties were the ones that were closest to the train station and that, you know, you see sort of the difference in depth, right? As you go from block one, block two to these, I thought as a conversation this evening, it was, it was better to include them and have a discussion about it than sort of just ponder on that and just to save the.
I, I agree with it, I'm just, I can't see that far, so I'm asking.
You've nailed it, from that distance.
My, my two cents is that you have some nice things going on there, but there's a lot of parts of Broadway that I'm personally dissatisfied with. It is what it is. And I think it's even more challenging of an area than Market Street. So, in my opinion, the more, uh, the more flexibility you give people, the better. Where we draw those lines is thus, but I think the more is better because we did Market Street and nothing's happened yet.
I, I understand what the councilman's saying and he's, uh, considering the developer. And we want to attract the developer, but at the same token, we don't want to sell the farm in terms of the residents who are living in one-family houses in back of this. So, uh, I, I think four stories is, is sufficient and let's see what the council says.
I'm going to put myself in the shoe of the house in the back. So, if I'm living in the back, either I'm looking at four-story or five-story, I don't think it would make a difference to me. So, I think the five-story would make more sense than the four.
I don't know, I kind of feel like there has to be some kind of limit that we have to agree on. And I would err on the side of a little bit lower. Because if I had a home there, I wouldn't want anything blocking it. Um, I, I think you could do, still do something nice with three or four stories. I don't think you have to go to five or six.
Thank you.
Just my opinion.
Sandy?
So we said that, that building, because I know that area well, um, by Sterling, that one is four stories?
Yes.
One Broadway.
Okay, now I've been, I know that street, I've been in and out of that parking lot many times. I don't see where another story is going to make that difference, I really don't. So to me, whether it's four or five, it wouldn't matter. Because that, because I'm looking at it and like, and like I said, if I didn't know that building, I would say, well, I don't know, because I'd like to really take a look, but it, it doesn't look like it's out of place. So I don't think five stories would be.
Okay, so you're for five, Doris?
Four.
Explain one. Four the most.
Doris, uh.
Four the most.
Doris is four, Mr. Fisolo?
I just think we need to be really flexible with this area, I agree with Councilman Goldbeck. So I'm going to go with five, just to see what comes our way.
You're, so you're saying five?
Five.
So I think that's forty-two?
Yes.
Yeah, it's forty-two, being the rate set for, the rest of it's set five.
Forty-two, yes.
Okay, okay, continue.
Okay, I wish I had said this before you.
Sorry, Chris.
No, that's good. Um, so just like, I, I'm, I'm not going to like make slides to all these things, but, you know, while, you know, I said paying zoning, reduce regulatory barriers, like there are important things that you always need to want to protect people from, especially if somebody's going to do a larger project. Like, is there going to be light glaring into my home? Am I going to have a nice buffer next to it if I am in one of those case of residential properties? We always include language like that for site design standards. And then like also like, super importantly, um, and this is like, you know, the magic of, of the process and a little bit of project in front of the council for this, at some point. You know, and when you have a redevelopment plan, you can require a redevelopment agreement. And, um, redevelopment agreements need to come to the council before they go to the planning board. And like that, that gives the council and frankly the whole public an opportunity to, to opine on things more and express concerns and whatnot. Um, and give you a little more control than you would in a typical, typical project. So we include that requirement in our, in our draft. Just, uh, you know, just a couple of like things in practice. Like, it's really hard to find communities that have taken corridors like Broadway and like done really nice things to them. Like, this is like, kind of like the white whale of planning, frankly. But, uh, you know, if you walk around this street view long enough, like you do, you do find good examples every now and then. And, uh, so this is in Providence, or just outside of Providence. Like, this is a stretch of Route One, just outside of Providence. I walked up and down it virtually for quite a while. And, uh, I was thinking a lot about those smaller properties, what can we do with them? Like, who's actually done that? Um, and this, so if you can imagine that you're standing here and turning to the right, like that used to be a big empty lot and like this is a fifty-by-a-hundred property, which, uh, is constructed now and I think is actually really nice. A new construction, nice architecture, uh, has parking on site, it's got like two units upstairs, it's got retail downstairs. Um, and like I think that's the type of building on those smaller properties that will be, uh, that will be permitted on this. So I'm going to be, well, over time, uh, as I consider it. But, uh, I will tell you that in, in the draft, like we did sort of make sure the zoning works and like put building footprints down on existing properties, um, you can see that in there. And, uh, you know, like, I have what I call like an eighty percent draft of this, like which has to be reread and rewritten in sections, but I think the ideas are all there. I'm going to share them with you this evening. Uh, I'm happy to take comments or feedback, I know I already got one big piece of feedback or, you know, if there's other people who are non-councilor or attend council meetings who you think would be worth talking to, um, I call again, like happy to do that. Uh, but like ultimately, like, you know, I don't want to see this project, uh, die on the vine frankly. So, my objective is with whatever feedback I get and whatever feedback I get from whoever you told me to talk to, anybody, uh, to like button this up and like get you something to, to, uh, consider and potential work in some form.
Okay. Does the council?
Over eight minutes, but I do feel like there was five minutes of discussion in between, so. I see the floor backseat in there.
So, so basically you're looking for the council to give you approval on, on what you presented today?
See, approval is the right word, right? Like, you're not voting on anything tonight. Um, I want the council to, uh, go home, uh, tell me anything that pops in my mind now and to, uh, if anything that over the next couple of weeks pops into my mind. Um, and you were, if you want to have a meeting with me or whatever, um, look through the draft to the extent you have time and, uh, you know, marry it on it and save it for next.
I just have one question.
I, I know what we did up by Route Four with, with the fences, a hundred percent for safety because we had fatalities there. Lately, there's been a lot of buzz on Elwood Park Deserves Community, which is a site where people face the views. And just wondering, is there anything that you can think of and you can come back to us with it that you can kind of keep the fence, but make it aesthetically more pleasant to the eye? Because the businesses up there and the residents are saying, they know it's there for safety, but is there any way we can kind of make it look better?
So that's a DOT issue, not a planner issue, and we.
I'm just asking his opinion, Doris.
Oh.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Well, to offer my opinion, um, yeah, I mean, I kind of wrote this document as if the DOT didn't exist, right? Like, sort of acknowledged the existence of the DOT and said, if the DOT didn't exist, I think this is what the town should do, um, or the borough should do. Frankly, uh, I don't think the fence down the middle of Route Four, when they put that in, that was supposed to be a short-term safety measure, right? And these things become permanent like all too quickly. Like, I think it's probably already been up too long due to, you probably should have already done something about this. But, to answer your question, like, it's been here a while, right? Like, do some art on it. Uh, you know, it's going to be there for a while, like, let's do some public art or do something to bring it up, mess it up, like, we'll do that all over the place. That's doable, right? That doesn't require crazy and unhealthy.
So we reached out to them, uh, yesterday and told them that we're not happy with the, the current structure and we'd like whatever they deem appropriate that meets all the safety standards, crash rated, impact, all that stuff. We'd like them to consider something, uh, and I'm sure it's going to take us quite a few years to get them to even move on it. Because it took almost three years to get that fence in, which was for safety. I had to send them all fatality statistics and stuff and they still didn't move very fast. So, we understand that it's not what everybody wants, but we're at their mercy. Kind of like we are with PSCNG with stuff.
There's a lot less crossing now with that.
We're not saying take it away, because we want everybody to be safe. We're, that's why I asked Chris, I know he's the planner, but I wanted his idea. I'm sure he travels around and sees different things. Excuse me?
Public art.
Yes.
And like because it's just kind of a chain link fence right now, you can't really do anything with it, right? If, if it becomes a more solid structure, while that does seem like things are permanent, you can hang on it, you know? Big old wall in Elwood Park, you're all, right?
I, I highly doubt you're going to get something that high that's a solid structure. Because if a car crashes into it, it's, they're not going to believe that. You're not going to get like a millimeter of a divide.
Get what?
A solid base.
A solid wall.
Okay.
You're not going to get that.
You don't need a wall to make it, you know?
I'm just saying.
Well, in Fairlon, they just have kind of jersey barriers down the middle, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's not great either.
If you ever see something, can you send a sketch to us? Just to, like if you've seen it in other towns?
Yeah, for sure.
I, I would appreciate that, because you want it to be safe and if there's any way it could look better, that would be great too. Thank you.
Anything else, uh, for Chris? Chris, anything else for us? I want to thank you for your time, Chris. Erin, moving along?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Moving on to resolutions, for A, we have a third-party tax lien, any questions? For B, we have a road opening performance bond. Any questions? For C, we have an area in need of redevelopment for block sixteen-oh-two, lots two, three, four, and twenty-six, which was set over by a redevelopment council. Any questions? For D, we also have an area in need of rede-, redevelopment for block eleven-oh-three, lots three and seven, also set by our redevelopment council. Any questions? Okay, for E's, just a heads up from our board secretary that the following terms are expiring at the end of the year and would need to be renewed.
So with that said, uh, any recommendations from the council as far as replacement on the Board of Health? Okay. Anybody else have a recommendation?
So Mayor, what we could do is at the end of the year, uh, as we did last year, see if they'd like to continue on the board and then go from there.
Are, are we, are we replacing somebody? Because it, oh, okay, it's just their terms are up.
Yeah, she just wanted to give a heads up that their terms are expiring. So what we did last year was we inquired as to.
That's been standard procedure, is to see if the person wants to stay. If they don't want to stay, then we'll talk about replacement, okay? Okay, on that end?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, for F is a firefighter resignation. For G is a resolution to extend our towing license application.
Mayor, if I may address that, uh, the reason for this resolution is that it's sort of a pushing cart before the horse. It's just allowing the affirmation of what has been done, I think, yesterday. Today was the bidding, or the submissions of the application for the Bold. Actually, it should have been on the first, uh, however, this is a individual act that authorizes this item. So it's just a formality.
Okay.
Okay, though there is. No for H, uh, if everyone can pull from their packets, item number eight C, uh, which we'll discuss in public. The individual was Rice and they elected actually to have it discussed in open. So it's a letter from our DPW superintendent in regard to the maintenance schedule and the additional tasks that were brought upon the DPW. He submitted the maintenance areas that the DPW currently addresses and the bold represents new tasks that were added to their workload. So as you could see, they currently have a seasonal employee and he's requesting that, that seasonal employee be made a full-time position to supplement the additional tasks of the DPW.
Mike, you want to chime in on it?
Yeah, so Scott approached me about this. I do give him a lot more, um, areas to maintain. Uh, we're of the mindset that we're not going to wait on the DOT and the county to maintain properties that they're responsible for within our borders because we know how that goes. Um, it'll be the next season or the season after by the time they get there. And the residents deserve better and they don't understand that it's not the borough's responsibility. We accept it as our responsibility and therefore they are doing much, much more than they've ever done before. Scott has a part-timer that's, he feels comfortable with. He also suggested that we use the Clean Communities Grant to offset the salary, which would basically pay for a full-timer with, uh, uh, half of his salary. So I support it.
I agree.
So, so basically what we're doing is taking a part-timer, making him full-time, but he's going to be designated to, to these areas so that they never become questionable again in terms of who's going to, who's going to maintain them and who's not. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Counsel. And how, and, and how, I believe half of the salary is being paid by a grant.
Right.
So the only thing we're probably picking up is the, uh.
Same salary right now, because he's only working part-time, so we have a half of the benefits.
Right, but the difference is the benefits, we're picking up the benefit package, so.
But from the looks of the list, from the looks of the list, it's like sixteen new locations or that they have to maintain, so I think we're going to, we're going to need it. And there, there are areas that I know really well that do need the, the maintenance, so. Um, definitely for this and it, it's just, uh, sweetens the pot when half of the salary is going to be covered by Clean Communities, so.
Good, yeah. The, the only thing I, I would think that he, he must make sure that this person is designated for that and don't take them on to, and put them on to something else. Uh, because what'll happen is we'll be revisiting this problem of these areas that the state's not taking care of, the county's not taking care of. And like Mike said, residents don't care about that, they want to know why it's not being taken care of. So, so let's just.
I think Scott will do that, I don't really think Scott would take the gentleman away, unless it was an emergency, emergency that handled.
Yeah, well, let's hope, let's hope that's the case. Uh, counsel, any problem with this? No?
No.
No? Okay, moving along.
Okay, Mayor, moving on to ordinances, we have five A, which is. We have 5A, which is four-way stop-sign intersections along 54th. I don't know if the chief would like to...
Yeah, Mike, and if you could also mention what we're doing on the Boulevard in terms of the situation with the lighting there and the pedestrian crosswalks?
Yeah, I'll start with the Boulevard, Mayor. We have a meeting tomorrow with Public Service. We reached out to them numerous times. Like I said, difficult dealing with the utilities and the DOTs of the world and the counties of the world. They, you know, they're on their own schedule. Anyway, we finally got them to commit to coming and evaluating the lighting in the area of the Elmwood Village Apartments, and that is scheduled to take place tomorrow. We fully anticipate that they will make some upgrades there, probably with LED lights. We also, through Capital, have ordered pedestrian LED crossing safety signs for Mola Boulevard. There are six, five locations from Elmwood Terrace all the way to Veterans Place, the important locations that are not controlled by a traffic signal.
So, Mike, those are signs that pedestrians will press a button when they want to cross the street?
Yes, and it will flash LED, similar to River, Road, and Fair Lawn.
Okay.
So getting to East 54th Street, we get numerous complaints there of speeding. It's very challenging for a car that's, you know, trying to get from Molnar Drive to Broadway or Broadway to Molnar Drive and maintain 25 miles an hour. It's difficult. It's, that's very slow. I understand that it's needed, but it's very slow. So everybody with their best intentions to not speed there ends up speeding. We've done enforcement, we've done education, we've done warnings. We've identified that there are speeding issues there every day, and we killed it and wrote tickets. We find it's the residents that are doing it, mostly. And as soon as we leave the area, it starts back again. We've confirmed that through our radar trailer. So what we decided to do was recommend six crossings to be stop-sign intersections on East 54th Street, which will soften the speed in that area and force those vehicles to actually stop. There's 18 streets that intersect all the way from Molnar to Broadway on East 54th, and we're electing the six that we feel are the best suited to bear a stop sign.
Thank you, Michael. Erin?
I have a question. It's about East 54th, Mike Chief. There's a variable sign there, right?
What?
A variable sign, like, some of you could type in a message, right? And every so many seconds, it flashes like red and blue, like police lights. And it gives you the impression from far away that there's like an active scene or something going on. I just, I'm just curious, like, the purpose and whether it's necessary. Like, the sign says something simple, like, whatever the sign is...
Oh, the free...
But it's, yeah, but it's got blue and red lights that flash every, like, 20, 30 seconds, so I just...
Where, which one?
Gilbert and East 54th. You have a sign that says, I guess, like...
Oh, the free...
Yeah, that message. But someone on the sign, red and blue flashes every, like, 30 seconds. And I'm just, it looks like it's an active scene when you're driving towards it, and then you get to it and there's nothing going on. So I'm just mentioning it.
I don't know. I can investigate. I don't know if that...
Yeah, I mean, if, I think it's just, it's not, if it's not necessary, you know, to have the lights, you know, why make it look like there's something going on?
And may that trailer also, of course, Steve, so may I have something to add?
I just look into it, I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Okay, 5B is correspondence from the state regarding a model municipal ordinance for electric vehicles. As you can see in the fourth paragraph, the model statewide ordinance is mandatory and becomes effective in all municipalities upon DCA publication. However, municipalities are allowed to make changes to the reasonable standards. So perhaps you would like Mr. Ingraffia to look into this. The model ordinance can be found on the link on the second page. But again, this is something that will be mandatory for all municipalities, and you would need to make changes to the reasonable standards if you like.
Counsel. What's your pleasure?
My main, Mayor, it's a requirement by the state, they adopted statute where they're
going into the green aspect, and what they're requiring is that every municipality adopt an ordinance whereby there will be laid out charging stations and so forth, and the parking size, and where, and places, and there is a model ordinance that they have for utilization. However, the council can then adopt amenable other aspects to it to make it more amenable to the...
Is it mandatory we adopt this, Sal?
Yeah, they're going to require it, I think the deadline is next year sometime. I have to look into it, but it's going to be same thing as you would have the storm sewer and all these kinds of things. They're going to require that every county, every municipality provide these electric stations and so forth.
And electric vehicles, too? They're going to mandate?
Well, they're not yet to that point, but they will, I'm assuming.
Yeah. Okay.
They want to start eliminating any fossil fuel use.
Okay.
So in other words, it was just like Howard Johnson, they were smart enough to, in many days, and past, and Mayor used to remember, Howard Johnson, when they started building cars, Howard Johnson was capable of getting an exclusive 99-year lease on every roadway that the federal government was going to build, because they knew there were going to be one that was going to provide the service, and they had exclusive rights. That's basically what's up.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll wait for their guidance from Sal. Mayor, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Okay, that brings us to Council reports. Councilwoman Ballastiri?
Okay, most of us attended the softball 50th year anniversary dinner on Tuesday. It was a beautiful evening for all of our athletes. I wish them continued success in the future. And I also would like to congratulate the chief on his prestigious valor award last night from the 200 Club. It is so well-deserved. Thank you for always having passion and a love for this community. So this was a great honor for you to have, and we're very proud of you. And that's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Sandy, Councilman Ficori?
Thank you, Mayor. The softball dinner was great. Thanks to all the athletes, the organizers, thank you, Sandy. It was a great dinner. I also want to thank all the people from the Board of Health for Senior Day. It was a great job, especially Mr. DiMarzio and all the members of the Board of Health. And I also attended yesterday the Chief Valor Dinner. It was, it was a moving experience for me, but, and I'm going to say, thank you, Chief, and Elmwood Park is one lucky town to have you, so we appreciate it. Thanks, Mike, and progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Fasolo?
I also would like to recognize everybody who worked hard on Elmwood Park Celebrates Seniors. It was a good event. I got to attend that. I also want to tell the council that the internship program for the youth committee, applications are made. I'm just working with a borough attorney right now to now down a permission slip with our insurance company and things like that, so that's going to be coming into fruition pretty soon. Other than that, progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Golubek, I haven't been able to say that for a while.
Progress, Mayor.
Nice to have you with us.
Progress, Mayor. To be fair.
Councilwoman Pellegrini?
Yes, a couple things. The Residents Assistance Program update. On September 17th, we had the Stomping Out Hunger event at the People's Pantry. We had some rain that evening, but eventually it stopped and the event went on successfully. Our residents were very grateful for our free walk-up markets, school supplies, free raffle baskets, and all the food items that were offered. That night was a team effort by so many. A big thank you to the RAP program, the People's Pantry, Our Way to Hope, Strangers Helping Strangers, Tom Mulligan and our student athletes from our Memorial Middle High School, Commissioner Tracy Zer for her endless support in aiding our community with food resources. Also, a big thank you to our RAP coordinator Angela Favre for all the hard work she did to organize such a great event. Also, the Residents Assistance Program yesterday. Student volunteers from Immaculate Conception High School came to help out at the People's Pantry. These young women helped replenish and reorganize the People's Pantry shelves and, reorganize and fill the pantry shelves. These volunteers were chaperoned by Immaculate Conception's Head of Schools Jessica Curtone and Athletic Director Dale Favre. The students earned service hours for the community work. A big thank you to all the volunteers for helping out our community. Also, a big thank you to Angela Favre for working with these students and organizing this cleanup. We thank them all. My Board of Health update. Last Saturday, October 2nd, the Elmwood Park Celebrates Senior event took place. Our Elmwood Park Board of Health sponsored this event. It was a beautiful day weather-wise, and the event was great. So much was offered to our residents, fine food, free food, great entertainment, free giveaways, and valuable information was shared. This event started with the vision of John DiMarzio, Board of Health President. It took a team of so many to make his vision a reality and a success. Thank you to all that worked so hard to make this event possible. The next Board of Health meeting will be held on Monday, October 18th at 7:00 PM. Police update. Congratulations to Police Officer Leo Bertoli for graduating from the Passaic County Police Academy on September 29. I, along with Councilman Ficori, had the honor to be at the graduation that evening. We wish Officer Bertoli much success in his career here in Elmwood Park. October 30th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, our rec center, the Elmwood Park Police Department, will be partnering with the Recreation Department to have an indoor trunk-or-tree for the younger children and a scare house for the teens. Mark your calendars for an evening of Halloween fun. And lastly, ribbon cutting. On October 3rd, Councilman Ficori and I had the honor of participating in the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Ma's Tea House, located at 73 Broadway, Elmwood Park. A beautiful place, very nice owners, great tea, and much more. Wishing Ma's Tea House continued success in our community. I have to say, they were such touching young people. They welcomed us so much. They sat with us, they talked with us, and they let us know that they really want to be a part of our community, and they want to be at future events and have a table, and they were just so excited to be able to work with us and the whole council. So it was really a great, a great morning. We had a good time, and they're very excited about being really part of the community. And then, again, I would also like to thank Chief LeLagno and congratulate him. Mike does so much for our community on a daily basis, and it didn't surprise any of us when he jumped into action on that day and saved those two lives. A very well-deserved award for you, Mike. Very proud moment for you, your family, and our entire community. I know we all say this all the time, but he is somebody that really, on a daily basis, Mike is always there. He's a team player. He wants everybody to succeed and do well, and he always has his hand in everything to make that happen. So again, we all congratulate you, and we're so proud of you. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Council President, Lexler?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I, too, want to congratulate Michael. He's one special angel. He'll always be an angel in this town with the police department, the fire department, everything else. They're there all the time. Mike, you were there on a special day that you needed to be there, and you were the angel for the two people that you saved. Because without you, I don't know, you know, we'd be saying prayers for them. We'd say prayers for you. Senior Day, it was a great turnout. The weather, the weather was fine, and it was perfect. Everybody enjoyed themselves. Everybody had utmost things for Elmwood Park. Between the Community Day and the Senior Day, they said they never had such a great time in this town in over 50 years. So I think everything, we should keep on going, never look back. We're going forward this way. Everybody's involved. This is not a town, this is a family, because everybody enjoyed it. The Board of Health, like I said, I'd like to thank them, too, for everything they've done, because without them, either. Mayor, did you hear anything about the library? Have you heard anything about the library, what's going on with them? Watch that jerk. Hello? Mayor, I'm talking to you.
Oh, I gather you're finished?
No, I'm asking you a question. While you were having a conversation with Erin, did you hear anything more about...
He wanted to make sure that he called upon Councilman Fasolo. It wasn't a conversation.
You don't have to explain that to her. Go ahead.
I want to know, did you hear anything else about the library? The progress and everything about it? Because I have a...
Yeah, it's still, they're still waiting on permits. There's inspections still due. Status is quo, and that's as of two days ago.
Okay. The Veterans Committee for the Veterans, is there a meeting coming up or anything? Because people have been talking about, you know, no meetings or anything, about, you know, what's going on in the veterans' community, you know?
I could tell you this, that there is, there is a possibility that Fair Lawn will be merging with Elmwood Park, which would be a good thing, I think, and save the existence of the Elmwood Park VFW as we know it.
I'm not talking about the VFW. I was talking about the Veterans Memorial over on the Boulevard.
Okay, and what would you like to know?
Is there anything going on with it?
Yes, yes, we're proceeding.
Okay, well, that's what I want to know.
Yes, yes, and if you'd like, I can give you a report, a written report.
Yes, please. Because, what do you call, and when is their next meeting?
What meeting?
The meeting that, you know, you're discussing about the veterans, the park over there.
It's not, it's not any discussion. It's proceeding in reference to acquiring money. That's, you can help us that way by trying to get donations for the monument.
This council in this town is not going to do anything for it? We're just going to ask people to donate money to the veterans? The park over here, on the Boulevard by Kids Castle, that spot right there, you're asking people for donations to do that?
No, we're asking corporations for donations.
This is Elmwood Park. We want to do it as a mayor and council for this town, for our vets.
That's what we're doing.
Right, but we're going to ask, we're not going to put any money into this? We're asking for donations?
We'd like, the initial thought was to have it paid for by private businesses and not the taxpayer. Something wrong with it?
How are we doing with that?
We're doing good.
And how much money do we have so far?
I'm sorry?
How much money do we have in the, you know?
We have approximately, we're under $80,000.
And how much is this going to cost us?
Probably another 80, and that is with donations of work, which would be, since Zeri has committed already to doing, doing some of the work. Our DPW is going to do some of the work. And then we're going to see if we can get, like, landscapers who might donate their time like that.
Who's on this committee that did, you know, that's doing this? Because I've never seen anything. I, to be honest with you, I was under the impression, we as a council, and this town's going to do this for our vets.
Well, you're doing it.
Well, who's sending out the letters and who's putting everything together? Who's responsible for all this?
The packet? My office created the packet.
I didn't see the packet.
Okay, well, at the end of this...
Did anybody else see a package for the vets, for the memorial? Did you see it?
Doris, we did set up a dedication by rider account at a council meeting so that donations could be accepted, because anytime you accept donations for, that go into your budget, you have to do so. So that was done a couple months ago.
But my question is, who authorized the letter and who wrote the letter?
I did.
To the residents for any donations?
Not to the residents. This is...
Well, not to the residents, I mean, to the companies. Who wrote the...
I did.
And don't you need the council approval for that?
No, I don't, no.
Why? Because you're asking them to donate money to this town. You have to have the council approval.
I'm asking to donate money to...
The veterans.
Doris, Doris, if I could say something, we voted, Erin just said to you, we voted on to get donations. So we knew we were getting donations, because we voted on that.
But I want, we weren't, we didn't see a letter, and I did not see a letter, unless anybody else saw a letter. I don't know anything about it. But I don't remember when. Erin, can you send me when we voted on this? Because I don't remember doing this. I really don't remember doing this.
Yes, I could send you a copy of the resume.
Okay. Because what do you call, I don't remember. And the letter, too. Doesn't that have to be shown to this council before it's mailed out?
No.
Why?
There's no requirement for that. I mean, I could speak for other towns. There's plenty of times where mayors send out letters that aren't approved by the council. There's plenty of times where mayors send out letters that aren't approved by the council.
But you're asking people for money for this, for this town, and we are a council sitting here, we're elected officials. Don't you think we should know about this?
That's more internal, but the town's...
Sal, can you give me your opinion? Don't we have the right to know about this before he sends out a letter to companies saying the mayor and council's asking for donations?
It would be a courtesy why the mayor can send out correspondence as the borough on behalf of the...
The mayor and council, since he's putting our names on the, on the letter.
It would be, it would be nice to have members of the council made aware.
We, the council was made aware of this.
But we did not see a letter going out.
You'll see the letter. I'll take you as soon as we finish our meeting, and I'll, I'll give you the letter.
But that's not the point, Mayor. It's the point that we should have saw it before, not after. We should have saw this letter saying to...
Doris, are you saying you weren't advised of this whole project?
I don't remember. I, I, I'd have said, Erin...
Mr. Fasolo, is there, did we, did you say it?
No, did you, did you remember? Did you ever see this?
No, I don't, I remember we did dedication by rider, but I don't remember seeing anything else after that.
Right.
Right, but you're aware of, of the project?
Yes.
Okay, Sandy?
The project, I was there.
Sandy?
I'm aware of the project.
Okay. Lorraine?
But not the letter. Yes, I'm aware.
Daniel?
What's your question?
Are you aware of the project that we're trying to produce here?
I am aware of the project.
But we never saw a letter.
That's all, that's all.
Okay, so I would just say, maybe that was an oversight. I don't think the mayor did that intentionally, not showing the letter, but we were aware of the project. This is going to be a, a great thing, great pride for our veterans, and he's been just trying to get from big corporations, not, he's not going to, you know...
He went to residents and he went to companies in Elmwood Park, because I had three people call me and say that. Why are we asking for donations, soliciting money when this town, and this council's, you know, want to do this project?
Doris, this is like a positive thing, and I feel like tonight...
I didn't say it's not positive, Lorraine. I'm trying to explain to you. When you have residents calling us and saying, you know, calling me, to be honest with you, and a, you know, a veteran, though, let's say, why are we soliciting money when we could do, you know, why can't the town do it?
Why? So the taxpayers don't have to pay for it. That's why.
Progress.
Thank you.
I, I have a question, this is one of the, is there an official estimate of this?
Well, it's that...
Because I saw, I saw a document that had around a quarter million dollars.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, like, that, that has to come, that has to come here at some point, and I hope it does.
Well, what, what we're trying to do is fine-tune it. What's happening, it's, it's ambiguous. It's changing as we go along. We're getting commitments on, on doing work. Up until recently, we didn't have a commitment from our engineer, which, by the way, he just, they got on board that they will do the, the project with no cost to the town. So that number's changing all the time. We're trying to get to the point of where we can deposit, put a deposit on the actual statue itself, which I think we can do now, and, and move this along. It's going to take five or six months for the statue to come to us anyhow.
And, and who's making that decision?
What, what decision's that?
Like, like what this is, what this looks like? You're telling me about a statue, like, who, what's the, what's the, what's the process that we're...
Well, the committee, the, the people involved here were Mike, myself, and...
Engineer.
And, and the engineer and Lorraine.
That's what I want to know.
Okay. I guess my only point is that before we build this, before we spend that money, the taxpayer money or the donated money, I think just, it's got to come to this table for approval as to what we're doing here.
Well, let, let's get it together.
You know, I just want to make that point, because, you know, if we don't make that point, things can go way, way ahead where we, you know, start ordering all the statues and everything.
Well, there's only one order to be done.
Right.
I think we, if we can get a packet to everybody...
Mayor, I will send everyone the full project file I have on this, including the letter.
Okay, good.
Thanks, Erin.
Okay, does that make everybody happy? This is a good thing we're trying to do here.
We're not saying it's not, Mayor.
Let's stay, let's stay on point. It's a good thing.
We're not saying it's not. It just said that, I just, they, they to myself that I think everybody should be aware of everything, what's going on, not the last minute, say, oh, we're having this.
Okay.
Sending out letters to people.
And the whole point is to try and get it done without causing taxpayers of Elmwood Park one penny. All money donated, like we did with the band shell, which is remarkable. Okay, I guess it's my report now. We had a excellent night at the girls' softball dinner. It was a good, good mood in the room. It was a lot of fun. A lot of fun.